We're going to begin the next round of our forum this evening with questions and answers from our city commission candidates. On my far left is Mr. Jay Warren. Next to him is Ms. Karen Welch, and next to her is Ms. Canyon Giger. I'd like to welcome you individuals here this evening. Thank you so very much for joining us and being willing to participate in the conversation. Our rules this evening for you, you will be invited to introduce yourselves, and you'll be given two minutes to do that. Following that, we will ask you a series of questions. You'll have two minutes to answer. Our timer will have information for you as far as how you're doing with regards to the amount of time you have left. I will invite Mr. Warren first to the microphone.
Thank you. My name's Jay Warren, and I had to ask my wife last night how long I've been married, so she told me 27 years, and I gotta believe her. I have three children and six grandchildren. My family's always emphasized on public services, and even since I was little. And my Uncle Joe Warren was a state senator for 32 years, and we did a lot of talking back and forth as he came back on the weekends from Topeka. And we had lots of conversations about what was going on, how it affected the state with those bills that were being passed in our community and so forth. But one question I asked him one time was, "Why are you running? I mean, why are you taking so much time out in your life to run for the state office?" And his comment was that when you harvest the fruit from your area, you gotta put something back in, and that's always been in my mind all these years. And a few years later, we got in a conversation, and he said, "There's three things you gotta remember on issues dealing with, no matter what they are." And I said, "Well, Uncle Joe, what are the three things?" And he said, "First thing, you gotta have an open mind. You cannot have an agenda, and you gotta be able to listen." And I've used that nine years ago when I first ran for city commission to try to handle issues and stuff, and carried it forward to this day. Thank you.
Look, Bob, I have Mike. Hi, I'm Karen Welch. I was born and raised here in Arkansas City. I have a husband, Gary Welch. I have a daughter, Brooke Istus, who teaches at the college. I have a son, Patrick Baird, who is a caregiver. And I have one grandson, Ethan Istus, who also attends at Cali College. And then I have 12 step-grandchildren, from one to 12. It was amazing. And I also have retired city employee. I work for the Arkans City Police Department, which most of you know because I'm sure we've encountered you during some adventure in Ark City. And I worked there for 38 years in emergency services. And then I retired and care for my parents, who my father was a developer of the Cali County Vocational Technical Training Program. He was actually the one that started it. And my mother was a homemaker. We lived in, I often say, when I look over here at Bonnie, I say, "Oh, my gosh, I grew up and moved one block from home here in Arkansas City." Because they've been neighbors, uh, my mother's, for years. And, gosh, I don't want to talk past my two minutes. He's right. You put a mad muck in front of me, and you just go. Anyway, I also enjoy public service. I am familiar with Jay's uncle because my first husband was Bill Baird. And Uncle Joe was a premium for Cali County. And he did have very strong feelings about public service. And my family also has public service in their blood, and I just enjoy serving the public, whatever they want. I'm here to listen.
Hi, I'm Canyon Giger, and a proud mother of three kids. Most of you know me. I most recently have done programs called the Cookie Program, in which we've raised money to help people pay utility bills. And most recently, we've done Milk, Bread, and Eggs, which helps provide milk, which is an important need in a home. Bread and eggs through a local vendor here, and we've been able to do that for over 600 families in the last two years. I think public service is important. I think being able to reach out and help people in need is important. I want to, it's my first time to ever run for any office, and I want to do that to make this community stronger and better unified. Thank you.
I'm gonna give you the microphone right back, Ms. Giger, but before I do, I would like to let everyone know that the forum this evening will be available for you to view online tomorrow at youtube.com/ACDailyBites. So if you'd like to view the forum in its entirety, you'll be able to do that sometime tomorrow. And Ms. Giger, we'll start questioning with the first question to you. What three things would you like to see accomplished during your term?
If I'm lucky enough to be elected, I would like to see, as I said, the unification of the community. What I want to be able to do, I'm an advocate for children, and bringing them into the realm of being able to be a part of the system, whether it's through a mentoring program, doing programs where they become each of the department heads for a day, and job shadowing, whatever we can do to get them involved so that they're a part of the creation and a part of the solution. I'd like to see a lot more citizens involved in programs and boards. They're not run necessarily by a staff or administration, but that, or have an opportunity to look at things. We've, a number of times, people have said to me, "I've never met this person or that person. I've never looked at this budget or been online." And I want to make that easier for them.
Ms. Welch?
I believe that our community during the 60s, 70s, 80s, oh, my gosh. Anyway, I feel like we have become stable. Our youth went to school, they graduated, they left. I feel that many of the families that we grew up with in this area were, they lived not here, and their children didn't stay. So I also believe that we need to have future plans on what can draw our people and keep them here. And I also believe in participation in the committees, like Canyon mentioned. I was surprised at, when I first started, was the vacancies on all of our committees. People input. This government isn't about us, it's about you. This is your government. This is what you've chosen. This is how we need you to input to us, and we listen. So participation by the public is very important. I've seen many groups now that have started up wanting to volunteer and help other people. The People for People comes to mind, I've seen on a website, where individuals want to be contacted, and they'll come help our elderly. In case you haven't noticed, we are an elderly population here. So we do need to get up and help each other. Thank you.
Well, I agree with both the candidates, and I really can't put too much more said than what they've already said. I think that we need to see more input from the public about what we do as a commission. I think that they need to come to our meetings and ask questions, and we need input from the public to be able to go forward. I mean, we can't just do it by ourselves. We just, we need to have input from the public, because that's the, taxpayers are the ones that's paying the money for what we're doing.
Mr. Warren, I'll just let you keep the mic. And the next question then can begin with you. What difficulties do you foresee in the near future, and what would you do if elected to prepare for them?
Well, the most difficulty is, of course, is our hospital. They've, they're coming along better than what they have been over the last couple of years, and we need more doctor recruitment. That's been a financial burden on the city, because we had to give $450,000 last year for the sales tax was passed. And, but anyway, we need more doctors. We need the state to mandate the Medicare and Medicaid that's cost our hospital over a million dollars a year that we have to write off. And then we got their national level on Obamacare that's causing havoc, and I'm not sure that they, they don't have anything planned at this point in time, but hopefully they'll get something figured out on that. But our hospital is the most important thing right now. I feel like that we've gotta have a strong hospital, and they are moving forward. Our Jurastics Program that did start a year ago is done well. The Winfield Medical Arts that just joined last month, we're gonna gain three more doctors that's moving into a rural health care unit, I mean, healthcare program, which will get reimbursed 100 percent, so that's gonna help. But our hospital's one of the most important things.
The hospital was voted on by the people. They wanted it, and so we built it. And then the paradigm of doctoring and medical care in our area began to change. Clinics popped up in Wichita. People go to specialists up there, and they would have their surgeries done. Then our hospital was built. It had the equipment, but we didn't have the doctors that they have in Wichita. So a lot of our efforts, and I know the hospital has really worked hard at recruiting doctors to the area, and they have come up with some pretty good solutions, creative solutions, trying to get people to see that our community is supported by our hospital. And in turn, we have to support our hospital. And so they did. We have a cent sales tax, 1.5 cent sales tax. And so that gives me the idea that our hospital is needed and wanted here in Arkansas City. I believe that we need to look down the road and plan for a new sewage disposal plant. If I'm correct, I believe this one was built in the 1960s. And I think that we need to help our other generations that are coming up behind us prepare for the future, or start planning for the future with our infrastructure and with the operations of the city. Things are changing all the time.
Well, the hospital is the hospital. We want it. We know it's here. We paid the sales tax. We're doing the best we can. That's not what I consider the biggest problem. I consider the loss of population. We've got people moving out. In some cases, we're replacing them. In other cases, we're not. We need to concentrate on, that's a difficulty. We need to work on keeping them here, keeping our citizens here, keeping them employed wherever they are, and making them a part of the process that becomes the success. I understand about the hospital, and I understand that it's got its difficulties. But those difficulties are not gonna be solved at this level. They have a board. They are working through as many problems as they can. And as they arise, they're trying to work through them. Whether they're successful or not is really not gonna be dependent on the city commission. They're the ones that are going to make those decisions to be successful. And at some point, the citizens may say, "We're done," but that hasn't happened. We need to concentrate on the things that the commission can concentrate on, and that is, we need retention. We have 3,085 students in our school system. That's a fourth of our population. We need to give them places to go to work, or we need to make that drive more fun and worth it for them to drive somewhere else and come back home every day.
To hand the microphone to Ms. Welch. Ms. Welch, the next question is for you. What qualities or experience do you possess that make you believe you should be elected?
One thing that I have learned a great deal from here in being in the commission is that the city isn't a credit card. And patience, absolute patience. And so I have patience, because I'd like to do it tomorrow. And if that would happen, it would be great, but it doesn't. Also, I've learned a great deal about asphalt, and I've learned a great deal about water plants. And I can begin to tell you how law enforcement didn't prepare me for everything associated with the city. But I've learned quite a bit with the help of fellow commissioners. And my qualities are, I'm a good listener, and I've had a lot of practice at it. And if I can't find the answer, I know someone who can help you.
Mr. Warren?
That goes back to my Uncle Joe, what he's told me, the three things. You gotta be, you can't have an agenda going into issues. You gotta have an open mind, and you gotta be able to listen to people. And that's the three areas that I concentrate on.
Ms. Giger?
I'm probably one of the only citizens that attends city commission meetings that doesn't need to be there for a proclamation or for whatever, problems. Many times, I just sit through the whole meeting and listen to what's going on. I've successfully gotten information in years past that I've presented to commission to change their mind about something they voted on or they were about to vote on. I think it's important to look deeply sometimes at the issues that are at hand. And when a presentation is made or a situation comes up, if it doesn't sound right, I think you need to say something about it. I've tried to be open and available to any and all citizens who want to ask questions but don't know how. They'll call me, and I'll call. Several times, I've called the city manager with just the first question that comes to me, you know? And they'll say, "Well, is this, is this true? I heard this at the beauty shop. I heard this at the Donut House. I heard this at the Lion and Dylan's." And I get ahold of them, and they'll say, "That's ridiculous," or, "Well, that's true," or whatever the answer would be. And I think that it's important to go search those answers out. And I think that I'll continue to do that, no matter what position I'm in.
If you would, hand the microphone to Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren, would you agree to bring back the Friday work sessions, assuring that the public is welcome to meetings?
Sure. I love work sessions, and that's how we learn how to do things, and we can be able to ask questions and so forth. And I love work sessions, and I think it needs to be open to the public. They can come and listen to us, talk about issues and so forth. So I'm in full agreement on Friday work sessions.
I would love work sessions. I also like citizen input. I love to listen to what they have to say, what their concerns are. And it's a smaller environment, and they're free, they're free to ask questions and tell us what they're feeling and what they're thinking. So, yes, I love work sessions.
Okay, once again, I'm a little bit different here. Originally, when we had work sessions, we'd all get into the city manager's office, fight for chairs, really comfy ones, not-so-comfy ones. It's not a problem now, but it used to be. And they said, "Well, you guys decide everything in the work session. There's no public discussion on the camera. So you must have decided everything. We don't want you to do that anymore." So they wanted the public, wanted to do away with the work sessions, because they wanted them to openly have discussions on the camera. So when they did that, they said, "Well, you haven't had time to look at the issues. You need a work session." Either way, whether you get a work session or you don't, the public needs to find a way to stay informed and to know what's going on, so it doesn't come as a big surprise when roads are shut down, or when things are purchased, or things are sold. I don't mind if we have a work session. I think it's a great idea. I don't, and I'm able to function without one. So whatever that came down to be would be okay with me.
I'll allow you to just hold on to the microphone and ask you the next question. The city commission uses city taxes to fund the city's budget and decides how to spend taxpayer money. Should someone who doesn't pay their property tax be on city commission?
Well, I don't know. I don't have a great answer for that. I mean, I think there are things that come up in people's lives that prevent that, and things that change that out, and in a moment's notice that can change. So I think it's important to do what you can, as much as you can, and move forward.
I'm sorry, sir, what was the question?
The city commission uses city taxes to fund the city's budget and then decides how to spend taxpayer money. Should someone who doesn't pay their property tax be on the city commission?
Wow. You know, I just never really thought about it. So I just can't give a conclusive answer. I, I just know you should pay your taxes, which I try to do.
I gotta really believe both candidates, what they said. I just, I don't have a clue. I mean, I just don't know.
Ms. Welch, I'll let you start the next question then. What is your assessment of how the city administration is doing today in terms of the day-to-day operation and the goals it has set for the near future, and how it is achieving them?
I believe the city commission, the city manager-type government works well here in Arkansas City. I have worked under several, several city managers, short-term, long-term, really long-term, and most of the time, I found them to be adequate. Most of our employees are very dedicated people. They've been with us for a number of years. But I found them to be reactive in a lot of situations that would happen around the city. And I really didn't know what to think of Nick Hernandez when I first met him. I, I just, the vibrancy coming off of him, and then the plans. He always had a plan. I'd never had that before. There's city government, and they've got a plan. I just wasn't ready for that. So it's been a learning experience this last 18 months, and we have some wonderful city employees that are very dedicated. We're doing a lot more with a lot less. And it's very difficult for me not to understand how hard they work. And they are, some of them have been there long enough that they've capped. And I didn't even know what capped meant, although I guess when I was employed, I capped. But they're working just to get that 2 percent cost of living raise. Oh, I'm sorry. A dispatcher, and you can't hear me? Anyway, what going back...
No, you really can't. We need to have a closer view of my...
The cost of living raise, they did not have for the last 10 years for one thing or another. I just found that unfathomable, but we still kept the employees. So you know we have dedicated employees. And I just like that we're proactive. We look ahead, we think of what can happen, and it's amazing to me, because a lot of administrations were more reactive.
Ms. Giger?
Day-to-day operations. If I have questions, I get ahold of the city manager. If there are things you don't understand, things you're curious about, that's who you call. And I think that a lot of people are afraid to make that phone call. They'll call me, then I'll call him. That's what happens. In things that go on, I don't think there's anything that's out of the ordinary from our city to other cities. We've got good days, we've got bad days, we have problems, we have successes, we have failures. And that's okay. That happens with every city. The thing is, we get up, and we try again, you know? There is no failure if you keep trying. You just found ways not to do it. So I think it's important to applaud people when they do a good job, but I don't think that it's one of those situations where anytime you question something, you're being negative. You're questioning it because you don't understand. We tell every child, "There are no bad questions. Ask me, I'll tell you." That works for adults, too. Ask me, and I'll tell you. And if I don't have the answer, I'll get it. The thing about this administration is if he doesn't have the answer, and I'm speaking directly about Nick, but if he doesn't have the answer, he goes and gets it and comes back with it. So, near future, I don't know. I think we have lots of small hurdles. I think the big ones are pretty much past, and so looking for a good future.
Mr. Warren?
Well, I agree on what the two candidates said. The only thing I want to add, nine years ago, when I first got on the city commission, we went through a lot of problems in, going forward. And when Nick got hired, we had $10,000 in our coffer. And we streamlined, or Nick streamlined, city hall over the seven years. And last year, when we made, we had to make a payment to the hospital of $450,000 before the sales tax bond was passed, we had $500,000 left in our carryover. So we've almost, went from $10,000 to almost $900,000. And I gotta give him credit for doing that, the way he overhauled the departments and so forth. And one other thing, one last thing I want to say is that on our sales tax for streets and stuff, we, the sales tax raised about $3.1 million. And Nick and the city staff were able to come in and, with bonds and grants and so forth, to do over $7 million worth of, with the work on our streets and stuff. So let's, I want to give him a compliment on what he's done on that part.
That is so true. And they spread it out over the entire city. One of the most difficult decisions, I think, that I thought of was when they were gonna chip and seal, we all remember chip and seal on our streets, right? Is when they decided that they would give us the option for radial lane, and they gave us a price tag of $300,000. And I thought, wow! But you know that that will last for about 15 to 20 years. Chip and seal will only last for about two years. So, yeah, I think our city has done an excellent job with your money, the taxpayers' money, in distributing it around the city, putting in the new pipes, the new curb and gutter, the paving. It's great. I love it.
You had already had an opportunity at that question, so I'm gonna start the next question with you.
Oh, goody.
Okay?
Bob was right.
This is a two-part question. First part, where do you stand on increasing or decreasing the city's sales tax? And do you understand how much it costs every Ark City retailer when the internet ships into Arkansas City at zero sales tax? I'll read that again, because it was a little... I'll read that again because it was a little bit unclear. Do you understand how much it costs every our Kansas City retailer when the internet ships into our Kansas City at zero sales tax? So, the first part of the question, where do you stand on increasing or decreasing the sales tax? And do you understand the implications of zero sales tax on internet products that are shipped into our Kansas City?
Well, I'd ever hate to sit here and say that I approve of any tax increase. Just sounds like a killer to me. But, I am not that familiar with internet ordering and it becoming free to your residents until just recently, when I was speaking with the previous generation, and they informed me that they don't have time to shop, that they were going to get things off of, I believe it was Amazon, something like that, and they just have it delivered to their house. And I think maybe we are a small community. I don't think we're gonna open up an Amazon-type warehouse here and have everything available, but your paradigm is shifting, so we're just gonna have to find some way to adjust to that. My phrase, "Shop Arc City first." I always try to combine something in Arc City first. I think it's fabulous. But, that's just me personally. My friends go to Wichita, they go to Polka City, they shop online. It's very, very difficult.
Mr. Warren?
Would you repeat that first part of that first question?
Where do you stand on increasing or decreasing the city's sales tax?
Well, of course, I don't like taxes, and I'd like to see everything decreased, but with our hospital, we had to pass the sales tax for that. We just, and our, for one cent for 10 years, and then we just, and our sales tax for a hospital that when it was built was a half cent, and that comes due in 2019. If we're gonna have sales tax, it has to go to both the people. And I'm not looking forward, you know, to opposing or promoting any sales tax without the vote of the people. The last part, I just don't have a clue. I can't answer that one. I just don't know.
Ms. Ganger?
Where do we stand on raising or decreasing sales tax? It depends on the need you have for it, and it depends on whether the citizens feel that need is enough to push something through. It's difficult for our businesses to do that, to pass that tax on to someone else. Originally, when we looked at the hospital, we talked about property tax increase. We said, "If you don't," from the commission, they said, "If you don't pass this, it's going on your property taxes." And whether that made people afraid, or whether their desire for that hospital was that strong, it passed almost two to one because the idea was it was more spread out. It hurt the businesses, and there are some businesses that it costs literally a lot of customers, tens of thousands of dollars worth of doing business here because they could go somewhere else and do it. We have, probably in reality, we're not gonna get away with lowering taxes. That's just probably the reality of it. So, what can we do to help offset our businesses and help cover that loss for them? Obviously, we need to shop here, and we need to ask them to have products that we're going to buy and encourage that. How we solve the internet with the fact that they don't pay any tax into this community when you buy something over the internet? It's not that we're not paying a tax, it's just that they're not getting it, or because it's all wrapped up in shipping and stuff like that, is we need to hit our legislators. We do say, "Look." But, it all comes out of the same pocket. Whether you're paying the tax, or paying the property tax, or paying the internet shipping, or whatever, it all comes out of your same pocket. So, there's no easy answer, but the reality is, it's probably not gonna go away. The government doesn't have a way to stop that.
I'll just ask you to hold on to the microphone and start with this question then. How important is the new water treatment plant to our community? And do you know how old the existing plant is?
Existing plant was built in the 70s, I think. It was 30 years old when they started talking about replacing it. I think it's 40-something now. I was a big opposition to that water plant. I don't know whether we needed a new water plant or not. I don't know. I'm not an expert at it. I wanted to bring in people that didn't have any, any fight in the situation. They weren't getting paid to give an answer one way or the other. And if you've ever sat in your living room and had somebody trying to sell you something, you know that they sell it to their advantage, whether or not that's great or different. But, if you had somebody that came in and did it for free and evaluated your situation, that was what I was asking for. I didn't know whether we needed a new water plant or not, but I wanted somebody to come in and evaluate it that wasn't gonna make any money off that evaluation. They tell us now that this water plant can provide enough water and revenue from that water to be able to pay for itself and to help this community in different ways. And that remains to be seen. We won't know if it was a great idea for years to come, but our hope is that it does exactly what they intended for it to do.
Ms. Waltz?
I felt that this was part of the progressive planning that I talked about. She's correct. Our last water treatment plant, I was believing, was built in the late 60s, 70s, and we can't just leave something there for the next 100 years. So, I do know that I have watched the water treatment plant take shape. It is really very intricate. It has some excellent filtering systems. I know the state of Kansas has certified us as having a natural aquifier on the Arc Kansas River. I know that we have some new wells that we've put in, some generators around those wells. I know that generators would have been nice in the flood of 198, yeah, 1998, when we lost water wells. So, I believe this is progressive. Yes, I think our water treatment plant is going to serve other communities, and I think they're gonna come to us as an example.
Well, I was in the full process of the water plant. We went through a six-year process on that, and we start out with the engineering firm at first, and when Nick was hired, we was going through the process, what they came up with, and Nick said, "I think we're going in the wrong direction." And he said, "We needed to make a change." And we did. We went with Berners-McDonald's. Before we got too far into the, with the new engineering firm, they discovered that our water was not, they, we were under the surface water with our old water plant. They felt like it should have been under well water. So, we had the state come in and analyze our water, and sure enough, we've been treating our water for the last 50 years wrong. It should have been well water, and it was surface water. And that's even our water plant up right off the top, over $3 million. Then, after that, we drilled a couple of wells, and we had the state come in and test our wells, and they expanded our water rights, and we're not just a water plant anymore. We're a regional water distribution center. And what that means is that we have enough water rights to supply the whole county, cross the borders, and take any big water user on that wants to come in our area. That's huge for our Kansas City. The other thing that's very important is that this is an auspicious, auspicious wind brain system. And CAMPAK, as, they're deciding on whether laying the lines from our water plant to their water plant for developing new products. And my goal is, is I want to see this water plant advertised all across the United States for the, for the small CAMPAKs of the world, and also small pharmaceuticals to try to promote jobs coming in this community.
Thank you. I'll just let you keep the microphone.
Okay.
And what are your thoughts about the Wilson Park project?
The Wilson Park project is a community, we've had a committee from the community that's kind of been developing the Wilson Park. I feel like that I don't want to see, right at, right to this point, I don't want to see city money really put into this thing. I want to see more volunteer money and funding outside the area for this park, but we can do maybe some in-kind services through our employees, maybe like sidewalks and water lines or something like that. But, as far as the funding the Wilson Park, I think we need to do it with private money sources.
Ms. Waltz?
I also wasn't aware that our Kansas City is the home of about 20 parks. I was amazed. I didn't know there was that many parks, but when they started centering on the Wilson Park, it just made sense that this is a central location, and the BJ Wilkins Foundation, of course, made it possible to make up these plans. I also feel like the community has enough civic groups and take-charge type people that will help us raise the money necessary for a several-year plan. It's not gonna happen overnight. But, yeah, I really enjoy Wilson Park.
Wilson Park project has, I've seen the master plan. They've worked very hard on it. I believe that it should be handled with private donations and that our city money should be used for other things. Until we have clear water for everybody, I just don't know how we can take on a project and use tax dollars towards it. We have lots of people that are investing in this county and investing in this area to do some of the things that they were talking about. Chestnut Avenue venue, if you guys have ever been out there, they're building a facility for 300 people to be able to convention out. And I, I think that's wonderful, and I think it's gonna give us a huge boost in what we can do in the community. When you invite that many people in, or you make it possible to have them, you also have to be able to feed them, you have to be able to lodge them. So, if you're going to talk about building things, we need, we need those kinds of things. You gotta be able to do what you start out all the way through for conventions. I think we need to really make sure that the park stays as a donor program. I just, I strongly believe that it's important to make sure our citizens are getting the top that we have first before we get into the wants.
I'll let you start the next question then, if you don't mind. Our bond rating is subpar. How do you propose to finance future expansion projects, and what are the three most important projects?
Well, I, to be honest with you, I don't know a lot about the bond rating. I've heard the same thing. The water plant did not work against us because it's being done through the payments of the users, which has dropped off. If you guys remember, a few years ago, we were talking about 5,400 meters, and now we're talking about a little over 4,900 meters. And so, we need to make sure that people stay so that we can divide that cost in a more economical way to each individual. How are we going to pay for things that we want in the future? It depends how we want them. I mean, we're going to have to put ourselves into a position where we're not so much funding wants, but we're funding the needs. Like every household, there's things you can't buy that you'd like to, but you just don't have the money to do it. And sometimes, that happens even with cities. We're seeing it all over the country. Everybody's watched the news and seen a city that's had to file bankruptcy because they don't have the people to support what they want. So, we have to be sure that we have that balanced out. The sewer plant is another big thing that's coming in. We're already getting a 2% increase on our water bills and sewer bills every year. That doesn't look like it's going to stop. The sewer plant, they have a little bit of breathing room now because KDHE's rules have lightened up a little bit. So, instead of a two-year thing, they've got about a five-year thing. So...
Ms. Waltz?
Well, our bond issue is a concern. Everybody likes to have good credit, and I can't blame it really on one singular thing, but the hospital has caused us some difficulties financially, but it's much like any household. You want something, you say for it. You cannot just go out and say you want it.
Our bond ratings, back when they did that, they didn't just take the city, they took the college, they took USD 470, and they took our hospital and put it all together, and that's how we come up with the bond rating. But, here in the last couple of years, our bond rating, as far as the city itself, has gotten better. And because of our cash flow situation, it's gotten better. Not our hospital, but the cash flow through the city. 2019, we're gonna have paid off of all our bonds that we incurred when I first got on the commission, that was prior to my getting on the commission. And we've been paying on that, and it, and we get it paid off in 2019, and that's a little over $500,000 a year. So, after 2019, we'll have a half, a little over half a million dollars that we'll be able to have, to maybe use on the North Summit. I mean, if the commission's still elect, I mean, that's something we're gonna have to all discuss about. But, we're gonna have over half a million dollars a year of free money that, once those bonds that, that we've had on currying for the last 15 years will be all paid off.
Last question. I'll just ask you to start, Mr. Warren, and we'll pass it over to you on the line.
Make it easy.
This is, this is as good as it gets. How are you going to get the youth of this community interested in wanting to help this community become better?
That's a good question, and I don't know if I've really got the answer right now, and I think it's gonna take more than me to be able to answer that question. I think the youth is very important. Some way or another, we've gotta get them involved because if not, then, I mean, that's our, that's our former commissioners down the road. I just, I really don't know how to answer that question. I need some more thought about that.
I remember, oh my, another story. I remember growing up, we didn't have computers. We had outdoors. We had moms that said, "Go outdoors." So, it became a situation where we were our own little community in our own little neighborhood. And I was surprised when I moved into my current neighborhood that there were children, they played, and as they got older, the computers and the phones came on, and there's no one playing in the neighborhoods anymore. So, how do you get them involved? Take their phones off. I don't know. They just, I guess they need to have some initiative to come out and participate in the, they don't have Boy Scouts anymore. I think I read where, you said there's no longer a Boy Scouts in our community? They got, okay. And Girl Scouts, Campfire Girls, we just had a whole bunch of church groups. Just a lot of involvement. I don't know if that's a situation that we as commissioners can really address. I think it's more of a parent-community thing.
I got, I just can't even one thought to myself while she was talking, Karen was talking. I think a lot of it has to do with the parents. Parents have got to get their kids involved, whether communication or whatever. It has to come from the parents to the kids. I can't see how the city commission can be able to come up with an answer to help, you know, getting young people involved.
When a program is introduced, it... When a program is introduced, it comes with a cost. Almost everything comes with a cost. What we need to do is develop the programs that don't come with a cost, that people can put their kids in, that people can be involved in. We started a program, restarted it three months ago, called the Chefinbee. We had five kids, we have 14 now. We don't charge. They come, they spend four hours, and they cook. And they leave. We have volunteers that come in and help them, adults that help them do that. We keep thinking about what we can do that shove them in this, or put them in that, or get them over here, you know? Well, let's have a choir. What are you going to pay the director with? Well, maybe we're not going to pay the director. They posted, Karen was talking about, they posted that they weren't, not going to have a pack, a Cub Scout pack, because there were no leaders. And as soon as that hit Facebook, up came leaders. They had one consistent leader, which was Nick, who has kids in the program. But here came other parents. What? Wait a minute. What? I didn't know. I had no idea. And so a lot of times it's information. How do I get the information to you so that you know to volunteer? Nurtureing kids is not hard. I met a child the other day that wants to learn how to knit. It took me five minutes to find somebody who knew how to knit, who agreed to teach them. That's it. If I call you and say, hey, can you teach this child to throw a ball? Or can you teach them to balance a checkbook? Or can you teach them to tat? Or can you teach them to do anything? Tattying, by the way, is a yarn. But, you know, what can you teach them to do? Go where it's back riding. What can you teach them to do? It's about us making that happen. And we can do it from any chair we sit in.
That concludes our forum from the city commission candidates this evening. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Thank you all very much for being here this evening. We'll take about a five-minute break while we get resituated for the school board candidates.